Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 17, 2025. I'm John Dwanzik, and this is the regular meeting of the Avon Lake Board of Municipal Utilities. With me from the board tonight are to my right, Mr. Ricky and Mrs. Schnabel, and to my left, Mr. Mondello. Mr. Rush could not be here tonight, so he's excused. Also with us tonight is to my right, Mr. Monroe, and at the table, Mr. Urinich. They are respectively the Chief Utility Executive and Chief of Utility Operations for the utility. Also at the table is Mr. Anthony Coyne from outside council. In the room tonight with us is Councilwoman Amy Gentry, and also Officer Kent Reber from Avon Lake Police. Tonight's meeting is being live streamed on Facebook and Zoom, YouTube. And we also have an opportunity for public input. I'll announce that when the time comes, but if you're on those internet interfaces, you will be able to make comments in the comments section on your respective interface. With the four people on the board, it still takes three votes to pass any motion. All motions are made by voice vote with the exception of executive session, which is done by roll call vote. And without Mr. Rush here to guide me, I'm going to assume I have covered the perfunctory. Also tonight, the meeting opens with the approval of minutes from the June 3 meeting, which I did not attend, but so I will abstain from this. Well, there's no motion anyway, but are there any comments or anything on the minutes from June 3? I read them, they seem very thorough. It seems like there was good discussion on things. Hearing none, they are approved as submitted. Next item is public speakers. Would anyone like to address the board? Ms. Councilwoman Gentry?
I understand there was an incident that happened, I think it was last week at Miller and Walker.
I will be reporting on that in a little bit.
Okay. In light of the fact I've got a seven o'clock, I just wanted to just say thank you very much for assisting while Mr. Liskovic was out of the office.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that I said that.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Now I'm excited.
That was just the teaser.
Anything on from cyber world, Mr. Urinich?
There are no comments at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The next item, thank you, Mrs. Gentry. Next item is the correspondence. That is Mr. Monroe's place.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not have any correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the expenditures on your golden rod sheets. Would someone like to make the motion to approve the expenses from May 30 to June 12?
I will.
Mr. Ricky?
I move to accept the expense report for May 30, 2025 through June 12, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Schnabel. Discussion.
Quick question.
Mr. Mondello?
Yeah. 722 and 703 WW Williams for the generator inspection maintenance. Is the varying price just due to the size of the generator, or is it just based on consumables or whatever they did? It's not a flat rate?
No, it's not a flat rate. It is consumables, and if there was anything that they did have to actually service on.
What number was that, Mr. Mondello?
17 through 21 on 722, number nine on 703.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Ricky?
Yeah, just on, it shows up a couple places. Weekly lawn maintenance, Randall's Lawn Care. How much grass do we cut? Because there's a lot of money here. I'm just curious, do we have a lot of property we need to maintain?
Yes, all of our properties.
We don't cut it at all?
No.
Nothing gets cut by us?
There may be a small portion inside the water filtration plant that maintenance staff may tend to, but this is all of our facilities, all property we own.
Is it 1,800 bucks a week?
No.
Oh, it just says weekly lawn maintenance?
Yeah, they come weekly. That's, I believe it's six, there's six payments throughout the year, and it's a monthly payment.
Okay. I mean, I'm thinking there was 1,800 dollars a week on the grass.
It's a weekly service. They come to every site once a week.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Ricky.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. One is on number 32 on Fund 701, maintenance leak detection services. What's that all about? Leak seekers?
Leak seekers.
They had had a water leak near an intersection, and they were unable to pinpoint it themselves, so they'll call in that company to try to determine more closely where the leak is at.
So which pipe to dig up or whatever?
Right, whereabouts to start digging.
Okay. All right, that answers that. Next one is on the same page down at number 55. I know what a survey is and all that, but I never heard of this FE Crocker and Associates. I see that appears a few times. Is that a normal vendor?
It's a new surveyor that we have used. We needed to have the topography done at our, it's not even newly acquired properties. We acquired them last year, but the former coal pile parcel, we wanted the, all of the topography and contours of that, so we hired that surveying company. And primarily that was done in preparation for establishing the upcoming easements that we would grant for Lorraine County Metro Parts and their multipurpose trail.
So this is something joint with them?
It is. I mean, because it is our property, and we wanted to ensure that it was done to our standards, we hired the company.
All right. And then the next one, maybe Mr. Urinich can help me out with this. I've seen this before, probably for 20 years. Polydine operating supplies polymer, what exactly is this polymer and what's its function?
That is a polymer, I believe, that they use in the press at the wastewater facility. So it just helps everything coagulate together, get more of a...
So in other words, it kind of like solidifies the solids and sort of excludes water, and that makes the water easier to treat, and you have to squeeze it out?
And we dispose of less water with the sludge, so it cuts down on the...
Okay, well, that's a good, that's a good explanation. And then the last one I had, maybe I missed this one, but the last item on that Fund 721, fund transfer 689, 850, it's you're transferring to SDSR, is that like Star Wars or what?
That stands for Sewer Debt Service Fund, Reserve Fund. So these are budgeted transfers that happen twice a year, that transfer from the operating funds into the debt service funds, and then debt service payments are made out of those.
Okay, it's just a routine, so we get revenues in these accounts, and we pay the debt service outlet.
Previously, these, you know, prior to Mr. Logan, these were done in conjunction with myself and staff, with City's Finance Department. Mr. Logan, he now initiates those with the Finance Department and says, we want the transfers to happen on these dates. That way, from an accounting standpoint, it's much cleaner before they would be done just in one transfer towards the end of the year. So it would kind of show, it would be an artificially inflated operating fund, and then all of a sudden take a large chunk out of it at the end of the year. So by doing this, it balances much better.
Okay, very good. I think Mr. Logan has simplified a lot of things, but I was a little tripped up by the cryptology there. Any other comments, Mrs. Schnabel?
The only one I had also was in Fund 721, lines 15 through 17, the fees for like the merchant bank fees or express bill pay fees, are those different types of fees?
Yeah, the, those are credit card.
For a credit card payment?
If somebody makes credit card payments.
And we absorb those fees?
Yes.
We're back.
We have, during the pandemic, we, because we wanted to give all of our customers every opportunity to be able to pay by any means, so we started to absorb those service fees. And we did not switch back until we, because we were switching to Springbrook. Mr. Logan is in the process of shopping those rates, taking the best rates.
So in the meantime, we're still covering them?
Correct.
That's what that is?
Yes.
And so one says express bill pay, and the other just says bank, but it's all still the same idea?
It's the same, the reason it says express bill pay, because that's through the portal online.
Yeah, yeah.
So it goes, it funnels through that, but the fees come out, so it's allocated in that description to express bill pay.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Ricky?
Yeah, I've seen it a couple times on here, and I guess I got a couple questions. Is Fund number seven, I know it's seven, 723, line number 51 and 52, and then you go to 721, there's just Enterprises on there, but then you go to 722, line 51 and 52. This all has to do with lease payments. Ford F1, Ford, Ford F550.
Which, which fund are you on?
Well, there's two, both are identical. Huntington, 723, 722.
723 is on line item 51.
Okay, 723, line item 51, is Huntington Public Capital. That's a lease payment on Ford F550. That is our lease payment for our camera truck. We make that payment once a year.
Once, well, it's on two funds here, so we're making $60,000 payment?
Correct.
And we do that, how many, how long do we have to do that for?
I believe it was a, it was a seven-year lease. We are in year, this is our third payment of seven.
Okay, of 60,000 each. Okay. Pretty expensive truck. Are we, are we using that truck a lot? Are we getting some good mileage out of it right now?
It's pretty much invaluable at this point.
Okay, and then I just, I'm kind of curious.
Well, before you go on, the next line, item 52, Enterprise, that is our lease, vehicle lease payments for our fleet vehicles.
And I guess my question is, are you happy with that program?
Yes.
That we've, that we're, it's working out good?
Yes, it is.
With Enterprise, and you like the way it's being handled?
I will tell you, from a management standpoint, with the fleet, Enterprise, they, they just had, I know that Greg and Bobby met with Enterprise maybe a month ago, looking ahead for the next year, in providing an outlook of, you know, what are our needs? Is there anything that they can do better? Are, you know, basically a customer review meeting. But anytime that we've contacted them, whether it's during the ordering process, whether it's during the titling process, or once the vehicle's been received, they have been very responsive.
Have we received all the vehicles that we have ordered right now?
No, no, we, we just received the first of five vehicles that are coming this year. We just received that. I think, I believe we got that vehicle back from the graphics company, so that will be going into service here real shortly.
What happens to the old vehicles? They go to Enterprise?
Enterprise sells them, and any equity that they sell the vehicle for is returned to us. We can either take it as a just check, cash payment, or we can put that on the new vehicle that it, that replaced it, and to lower that, which is what we choose to do. We invest that equity back into the vehicle, we keep that rolling in the vehicles. To have a lower type payment.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mondello, it looks like you have another question?
I did. On 703, you see it 11 and 12, operator charges, charged to us from us.
Well, it's, we're the vendor, so it's, it's when we work on the ETLs, because we are the contract operator, we have a job sheet, so all our equipment, all of our labor hours is accounted for on that job sheet, and it gets invoiced to those funds. So the consortium members are paying us to operate the ETLs.
So do those wages for said operators come out of our side of the operating budget?
It does.
Or the account or the...
It does, and then it comes back in as a miscellaneous revenue. So it doesn't get allocated back into salaries, but we do get that plus overhead. So it's not just that, like a flat, whatever their hourly rate is, there's the multiplier on that.
We're a participant in the consortium, and we're a consumer of the services, partial consumer. Everybody in the consortium throws in for it. Okay, so any other questions before we vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. A motion passes. Thank you. Next item is the biannual chemical bids, and that looks like a Mr. Monroe's, he's the narrator in this case.
Thank you. This is our twice-a-year chemical bid. Bids were opened on May 21st. These are chemicals used at the water filtration plant, the water reclamation facility. This is for a contract period that will begin July 1st and run through and up to include December 31st of 2025. Everything was pretty straightforward. The bid tabulation was provided in your board packet on page two of two. It does show a percent difference. You know, some of our chemicals had modest increases, and some of them actually had a decrease. You know, liquid chlorine went down $100 a ton, which is a good thing. The only item that we did not receive a bid on was ferrous chloride, and we seldom purchased that product. We had actually just purchased under our current contract, and over the next six months, we probably won't have to purchase any, so it's really not a, not an issue for us. If we did have to purchase it, it's about a, I believe Greg, maybe $6,000 expense?
Yeah, it was, it was under, it was under 20.
Okay, but it's not a large dollar figure and falls below a bidding threshold, so we could just procure it by getting quotes if we needed it, but we don't anticipate that we're going to need it.
So as it turns out, this is like ferrous chloride's day off?
Yes, yes, kind of like Ferris Bueller.
Would someone like to make the motion? Mrs. Schnabel, historically, does these.
My twice-a-year.
Does a tremendous job.
Okay. I move to authorize the CUE to execute chemical supply contracts valid from July 1, 2025, and running through and including December 31, 2025, in accordance with the following. For liquid alum, USAL LLC for $624.50 per ton. For hydrated lime from Bonded Chemicals Incorporated for $388 per ton. Sodium silico fluoride from PBS Knollwood Chemicals for $2,760 per ton. Liquid chlorine from JCI Jones Chemical Incorporated for $1,825 per ton. Potassium permanganate from Univar Solutions, USAL LLC for $8,818 per ton. Dry polymer from Polydine Incorporated for $5,060 per ton. Liquid polymer for Polydine, from Polydine Incorporated for $3,560 per ton. Carbon from Carbon Activated Corporation for $2,000 per ton. Liquid orthophosphate from PBS Knollwood Chemicals for $780 per ton. Liquid sodium hydroxide from Bonded Chemicals Incorporated for $865 per ton. Sodium bicarbonate from PBS Knollwood Chemicals for $775 per ton. Sodium hypochlorite from PBS Knollwood Chemicals for $458 per ton. Hydrofluorosilic acid from PenCo Incorporated for $552 per ton. Liquid calcium hydroxide from Chemtrade Chemicals, USAL LLC for $240 per ton. Salt from PBS Knollwood Chemicals for $682.70 per ton.
Thank you, Mrs. Schnabel. Outstanding job. Would someone like to second? Mr. Mondello moved and seconded. Any comments or discussion from the board? I note that we have been used to for many years, Mr. Gaydar stamping the engineering review, so this is the first for Jared Alexander Larson, who's our in-house professional engineer now, that is affixing his seal to it, so it's sort of a milestone.
Yes.
And congratulations to Mr. Larson. Any other comments on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. A motion passes. Next item is the, Mr. Urinich's favorite time of the month, project updates.
All right. Okay, we have our pictures today.
All right. They're worth 1,000 words, so already is that 1,000?
I mean, I should just not even speak, and let the pictures speak for themselves, but I had met with project manager of Chara, or A L E R G, Wayne Woodruff. He'd taken me around the site last week. He had provided me with this drone photograph. This is obviously looking down on the site almost as a whole, just kind of showing, I should have put up a before picture for true comparison, but they've made quite a bit of progress. They are finishing up on the administration building demolition. This was taken maybe about a month ago, so it does still show more of the admin structure than is currently there. They are anticipating that the actual demolition contract will be finished by the end of August. And just as he mentioned, you know, he doesn't want, the demolition contract itself will be finished, there will obviously still be cleanup that will have to take place. They've, you know, really started, as you'll see in the next pictures, kind of organizing a lot of the concrete into piles. They, for such a large site, it's a very organized area behind there. This is from kind of the middle of the power plant site, looking south. That was what remains as of last week of the administration building up front.
Very nice. And I agree with you, and it's, considering the massive scale of it, the demolition has been fairly, you know, reasonable to live with for the residents, so they've done a nice job from, at least superficially, keeping things organized, clean, and safe. So, and the reason we're doing this, of course, is because we have an interest in the quality of the water that's adjacent to it in particular, and we want to make sure that everything is done according to Hoyle or at least Urinich.
This is just standing in pretty much the same location, looking towards the west, and then looking towards the east. Big piles of concrete, they're going to be having a company come in, break that up, remove all of the rebar, the concrete itself will, some of that will be used as fill throughout certain areas. But that's, it's really, you don't appreciate how big that site is, you know, all these years you've driven by, you see it from Lake Road, but really being back on the site, there's a very large section of land out there.
Yeah, well, a lot of it was behind that wall that you see on the right of this picture, so you don't really notice it, you would just kind of like tune it out after you first said, oh, there's the power plant, but I think it's about a half a mile, isn't it? Something like that, along the front of the power plant?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure, but it's definitely significant.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Moving on to the ETL Design Services, Attorney County Cars continuing to communicate with all the property owners for the easements. July 24th is the date we have scheduled to meet with all the consortium members again to continue finalizing those cooperative agreements.
How much cooperation is going on, moving along?
I, when I was scheduling the July 24th meeting with all of our partners, I had asked if anyone had any red lines or anything on the draft agreement that I provided, if they could provide it in advance so that we could start a track changes, master copy, and I have not received anything as of yet, so I don't know if that's a good, good or a bad sign. But we hope that the July 24th meeting is a productive one, that we can come to a consensus on this new cooperative agreement, so that we can all then take it to all of our respective governing bodies.
Yeah. Going back to the power plant real quick, Mr. Urinich. Percentage-wise, where would you say we are in the scheme of complete demolition of the former power plant?
Far as the actual structures, I mean, there's very little remaining of the administration building, and then there is obviously the wall along Lake Road. There's still going to be a couple of structures, he had said, but those are ones that they will be able to, if they do indeed come down, they'll be able to handle that outside of the demolition contract, is that those structures are simple enough that they're not going to be, there's obviously not going to be any further implosions. That's something that whichever company is finalizing that.
You know, demolition. So take a stab at percentage-wise.
As far as the demolition, I would say they're 90%.
Write that down.
I'm getting held to that now, so.
All right, that's, it gives everyone a feel that this has been, I would say, what, three to four-year process? So 90% would say, you know, if that's, let's call it 48 months, you might have another five months?
You didn't really provide a timeline as far as when, like, the complete remediation will be done, but as far as the demolition, I mean, they're nearing the end of that portion.
Okay. Just so people can mentally conceive of it. Anybody else with anything for Mr. Urinich? Please go on with ETL Design Services, if you're done with that, go on the water filtration plant.
All right, so for the water filtration plant, they are currently, Great Lakes Construction is currently in the process of removing all of the scaffolding and the temporary work areas. This is the chemical feed structure. They anticipate being done with all of that, the removal of those temporary items within another week and a half, I believe, and then that's when the trades will come in, they'll start with the plumbing, electrical, masonry. So that is progressing very nicely. Back to the, you can see the open areas on the top structure, those are areas that the bulk tanks will be in. One of those is reserved for a future addition to, if we needed to expand, we can bring one in through the roof that way. So those are just part of the structure that they have planned out for future work, upgrades, and installation of those tanks in the future if needed.
And again, percentage-wise, how far are we with this project?
Definitely not 90%.
Schedule-wise, according to the schedule, we should be about 50. We are about halfway through the project. June of 26 is our substantial completion.
About a year from now. Okay, thank you.
This is the new filters. These are the two northern filters. You can see they're starting to form actual walls. Obviously, the piping has partially been installed. Those are the drains for the filters, and you can see they're definitely building up from there. The floors have completely cured, so they've progressed to building the forms for the walls of those filters. They'll typically work on the north half while the concrete is curing there, and then they move to the south half, and just kind of alternating back and forth, and then installing the pipes and valves throughout the process. This is from, taken from where the current chlorine building stands, looking southwest towards the new filters, but just kind of give you a visual indicator of how it relates to the existing filters. The white markings on the paint, or the white paint on the building, is kind of the... is kind of the, I guess, top level where you would walk, be at the water level. And then they'll still have to go up from there a little bit, but those are really starting to take shape as well.
And the facade will be similar.
Okay. Any questions on the water filtration plant improvements?
No, looking good.
Okay, moving on to the Techwin project. First Energy had completed the electrical connection. They still have to schedule a time to come out, fully energize it, perform all of their tests. So staff has also been finishing up the conduit runs for the chemical lines and electrical communication that run between the Conex box to the building that was already on the site where the bulk tanks are located. And we're also finalizing a schedule with Techwin for when their engineers will come out for the startup, commissioning, and training on this equipment later this summer.
Questions on any of that for Mr. Urinich? We appreciate the pictures. Very helpful. All right, Mr. Monroe, CUE report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few items to report on this evening. The first is in regard to our 2025 Water Bundle project. The preliminary documents for the OWDA application, we've provided some of them to OWDA. They indicated to us that they would, they would not be on, our loan would not be on their agenda until the July meeting. So it gives everyone kind of a timeframe. We did provide a contingent notice to proceed with UUI. And they fully understand it's contingent on securing the financing. So the city of Avon Lake, they had their portion, it went to committee. Two, two weeks ago, it was, they read, they talked about it last night at their collective committee meeting. And it will be on their council agenda next Monday. First reading, and they are going to suspend the rules and hopefully it will pass on first reading so that their portion of the project, they have the authorization to move forward as well. The next item I have to report on is in regard to, as I referred to earlier, newly acquired property, but specifically our, the former coal pile property. Just, just yesterday, well, actually this morning, I finalized a letter that I, I signed and provided to Verdantis, our environmental consultant. And Verdantis will be submitting on our behalf, our application and a request with the Ohio Voluntary Action Program for technical assistance with Ohio EPA to seek their feedback and technical assistance on our no further action letter for that property. So they have updated their Phase 2 that they did to incorporate the additional remediation work that we did in a couple of the identified areas of concern. And, you know, that everything is, is in order. So we're, we really didn't need to do the technical assistance, but we felt that at this point, it was, it was worth it. It, it's a grant funded technical assistance, meaning that if we're, if they authorize us, the costs associated with that would be paid for under a grant, so it would not cost us anything. I, I really am optimistic and hopefully that we have some movement on this for when you come back from your summer recess. So it's good news and, and we're, we're excited that that's proceeding as it is. And the last item that I have to report on is the teaser that Mrs. Gentry talked about earlier. And Mr. Urinich is not the only one that has pictures. What you're looking at here is the corner by our office here, 239 Miller Road on the northeast corner of Walker and Miller Road.
Looks like they've taken some dust suppression measures there.
Well, that could be one, one way of putting it. A couple of weeks ago, the, about three weeks ago, the former tenant of this facility, they, they did not renew their lease and they moved out. This operated as an automotive repair shop and they cleaned this shop out. And as you can see in the parking lot, what that is, is the remnants of oil and grease. That they, because the floor drains inside the garage were not working, everything got squeegeed out into the, into the parking lot. And of course, it's very visible to us. And as you can see where it's running, right to a storm, storm catch basin. So we immediately notified the, the city's stormwater manager, John Liskovic, the Public Works Director, made him aware of it. He dispatched staff over there to take some measures. Another item that, you know, we'll see here in this picture is you can see they had a makeshift used oil tote outside the building where from inside they were dumping used motor oil into this. This tote was leaking. It was leaching all around and this is all gravel. This is not a hard pervious surface like asphalt. And even further to the left of this picture, you can't see it, but there's, there's actually grass back there. So again, not the, the proper disposal of, of oil. So Mr. Liskovic contacted the, the property owner. And he, he has been responsive and he has made some efforts. But there, we have uncovered several deficiencies at this property. And until these deficiencies are corrected, and that's not just from a stormwater standpoint, that's from a sanitary sewer standpoint. Until these deficiencies are corrected, they are not authorized to discharge into, into the sanitary sewer. Now, there is not a tenant, a new tenant, but this is just another, another view that shows looking towards the Ford Assembly Plant, looking southwest there, and how this oil was just spread all over. We did meet with the owner up there. He's very aware of the deficiencies. I guess the good things, look at the good things in this situation are that catch basin was in severe, severe need of repair. So it was not taking much into it, which was good, that it was not making its way out to Lake Erie. Mr. Urinich contacted Ohio EPA and the Surface Water Division. They did come out here. They inspected the site. They also made an inspection at the lakeshore. And they indicated to us that it did not appear to cause any visible issues. The, to your point earlier, Mr. Ricky, when you asked about that camera truck, the camera truck was used a great deal up there. Not just on the storm sewer, but also the sanitary sewer. We wanted to see what type of damage this caused in our sanitary sewer. Inside that building is an oil separator that is in, is, is in the garage. And there's floor drains that go into that oil separator. That oil separator has not been maintained or cleaned in many years. It was packed solid. So that is why those.
Wasn't functioning.
It was not functioning at all. So again, there's another, I guess, saving grace here. It could have been a lot worse because nothing was really making it out into the, out the sanitary, into our main. When we put our, our camera into the, the sewer main, we attempted the lateral launch. As soon as we lateral launched into their lateral, the camera was just coated in oil. We couldn't go any further. So he did attempt to, the owner did attempt to hire a company to clean that, the lateral. And they could not get through that oil separator. So there's much more work to be done. We will be issuing, if we didn't issue it today, as we collect all of our information, a notice of violation. This is a commercial facility. It falls under our pre-treatment regulations for enforcement. The city in a similar path is also going to be sending notification for illicit discharge to the storm system. So there are significant issues. We have tracked all of our labor hours and equipment usage to this point. In reimbursement of that will certainly be part of our orders and findings. We will continue to update, update you as this fluid situation progresses. But we also contacted Ohio EPA Environmental Remediation Division. Mr. Urinich has been in contact with them. They are planning to come out to this site to give their opinion of remediation that needs to be done at this site because of the amount of oil that has leached into this site.
Certainly into the first few feet of soil there.
Yeah. And, and again, it may be a situation where it's, they have to dig up a couple of feet of the, the soil and replace with clean fill. But the current owner of the property did indicate when he purchased the property many years ago that he had a no further action letter. And that covered obviously the activities before he purchased it. Considering all of the activities that have, that we've uncovered at that site, it's not going to be covered under that no further action letter, I can say that. But again, this is, as Mrs. Gentry indicated, Mr. Liskovic was off on vacation for a week. So again, we, we worked collaboratively with, with them to ensure that, you know, we stay on top of the situation. And we appreciate their cooperation. Again, from, we all have the same goal in protecting the environment. And staff has done a great job as far as whatever's needed. We, it really was a, you know, all hands on deck type of situation for a couple of days. So.
Whose responsibility is it to inspect these places?
That's, that's the point I'm going to make too.
Well, I just wonder. That's, again, that, it's, this oil separator was put in, I don't know how many decades ago. And it wasn't something that was on our, you know, it's, it's a grandfathered in. It's not like they have to be permitted.
It looks like a 1970s vintage gas station.
So. Separator is on the sanitary side.
Correct. Yes.
Floor drain goes through separator and then goes to sanitary.
Yes. So, which, which is good, that it, it's going to at least be contained in the sanitary. But its current condition, we do not want all that oil and grease coming to our treatment plant and upsetting our process. We haven't even begun to, the, the, the process of cleaning our sanitary. There is a, another property to the east that fronts Walker that is tied into that main. They do not have any issues as of right now. So it's just those two lap, laterals that come out to our main. But we are going to have cleaning because we know that the oil's in there. And again, we, we will assess the, the charges. But now that, now it is on our radar, that, that oil separator. And they are going to have to come up to current standards as far as us authorizing any new business. If they were wanting to put another automotive shop in there, they're going to have to come in compliance with our current standards. And it is on our, now on our inspection list for our pre-treatment program.
Two things come to mind. Let me expand on Mr. Ricky's remarks. Mr. Liskovic, what was his title?
He's the Public Works Director, but he, by ordinance, he's designated as the store, the city's stormwater manager.
Well, it seems to me that in town, we have probably 20 or so similarly configured facilities, tire places, automobile repairs, et cetera, et cetera, that should all have some sort of oversight. Like, you know, they would come into my place and, you know, check the fire extinguishers. The fire department would do that. Shouldn't the, whoever's in charge of stormwater quality, that sort of thing, go around and make sure these things are all working as they should? Because really, it's good that we caught that, but like, the, the horse ran away from the barn a long time ago on that one. And we really shouldn't have. And we have a lot of new places that probably, you know, it should just have a regular program of annual, like, inspection. A guy from the city was just at my house because they had a tankless water heater put in. And they came out and inspected, was everything done the way it should have been? And similarly, when you're operating something that has the potential for, you know, hazardous or, you know, unwholesome discharge that somebody goes around and makes sure that everything is operating the way they should. Because needless to say, the oil that clogged, or whatever clogged, the floor drain started out as oil and dirt, which everybody has, and you let it go for 40 years. And next thing you know, it's just a log of, of oil and dirt. And we really shouldn't have this. And needless, it also was unsightly place. I mean, let's face it. And my, when I was in, as a practitioner, doing work on such facilities, including SPCC plans and all, I was always like a red flag. When you saw the place was so poorly maintained in the forecourt, you knew you were going to go. It was equally poorly maintained in the ways you can't see and maybe even worse. So there's an opportunity. And the other one is, isn't the guy that cleaned out the place, isn't he supposed to be licensed? Like by Ohio EPA or something? And shouldn't we be going back to him and say, hey bud?
Yeah.
Squeeging it out on the parking lot is not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It goes away.
Evaporates or what?
Quite frankly, I mean, you know, when, pictures don't necessarily do it justice. But I, I honestly don't know how anyone worked in that facility if all of that oil and grime came out of, out of the inside. But the, that was a question that the property owner, the landlord, asked me was, could he go back to his former tenant? Make him responsible? And I said, well, that's between you and your tenant.
Right, right.
We, we are, you're the property owner and that, you know. I, I, again, I will reiterate, the property owner has been responsive to us and is not, is not ducking us. And so we, we feel confident he's going to make things right. So.
You know, it's also important to understand that these are not just gas stations that have oil and grease separators. Every restaurant has one. And we got a lot more restaurants than we have old service stations that do oil changes in Avon Lake, you know?
Those are, those are all part of our pre-treatment program that we do inspect. And that's our, our staff at the water reclamation facility that does that. Again, this is one, we, we did not know that there was an oil, you know, grease separator.
They have a floor drain in there. There's got to be an oil and grease separator.
Well, unfortunately, what we found, and we, we found this a lot during sewer separations, was floor drains on structures built in the 60s and 70s were not always tied into the sanitary sewers. They were tied right to the storm sewers. Which was not a good thing. So again, it's a, we're, we're going to correct, you know, one of the sins of the past.
Right, right. Well, again, I would, you know, suggest partnering with the city because the city has like zoning inspectors and stuff like that. That is not an appropriate place, appropriate, you know, presentation for a city like Avon Lake with ambitions to be, you know, first rate. I can't have stuff like that. If you can, if it looks that bad outside, like I said, it's worse inside, you know? Like, it sounds like it is. And I'm like, that doesn't lead me to think, well, we should get that cleaned up. It should probably be demolished and, you know, start over again type of thing. Because I don't know how you clean that up, you know?
I'm sorry.
What did you say?
I said imploded.
Well, I don't think it would take that much, you know? Probably a morning with a bulldozer would take care of it. Anyway, thank you for that report.
That is all.
And you did, Mr. Monroe did tell me about it. But what, the way Mrs. Gentry characterized it, I didn't recognize the, this as, she called it an incident. And I, I thought people arguing, but it was really the environmental incident, I guess, is the way to characterize it. Mr. Mondello, anything from you?
Oh, good.
All right. So thank you for that report, Mr. Monroe. Is there anything else?
That is all I have. Thank you.
Any members with reports? Mr. Ricky?
Yes. Last Thursday night, I went down to Spencer, Ohio, and attended the Lorco meeting. And it was, it was interesting. They have quite a bit of, quite a few things going on, to be perfectly honest with you, with numbers of houses that are on the docket to be built.
with numbers of houses that are on the docket to be built. Eden Crossings is one that's got 150,000, or 150 homes in Phase Six and Seven. The Woods of Eden, that's another 25 sublots there. Beaver Creek is another 245 sublots on 158 acres. And then the big one is this Creekwood Golf Course subdivision. And I think we've been involved in that, Rob. Have you been involved with Creekwood? Because this is one that they originally were talking about going with all grinder pumps. And there's 690 homes going in this development. Well, then they decided to not go all grinder pumps. They wanted to go gravity feed. And apparently they had to go down 35 feet to make gravity feed work. Well, they got down to 25 feet, ran into a clay layer of 12 inches. And once they broke through that, they had an aquifer and it wasn't going to work. So now it looks like they're going to try to go from 690
Grinder pumps.
Pumps, grinder pumps down to 179 by combining some of these clusters and they're different two, three and four unit clusters. Combine them to get down to 179, which I guess each grinder pump would be a tap connection, correct?
Every home is a tap connection.
Even if they go to one grinder pump?
Well, yeah, because they're, they're impacting the system. So every home is a connection to the system. The grab, there's, the structure for their taps is they have a tap fee for, if you're a gravity tap, and then they have a tap if you're a grinder tap. So it's-
They, they have two different tap fees? Why is that?
Well, because the tap fee for a grinder pump includes the cost of the grinder.
Well, here it says the developer is now proposing to serve the development with individual grinder pump units at, and a low pressure force main collection system. Grinder pumps would be privately owned and maintained through the homeowners association.
And if, and if that's the way they structure it, then that's, they have done that in other subdivisions. That has, we have no say over that. That is all a decision by Lorco. There are certain subdivisions they've done before where maybe there's 15 homes in the, in the subdivision and all of those are private grinder pumps. So we are not responsible to, to service those or repair those under our cooperative.
Bringing up grinder pumps, this is FYI for everybody. There's 252 grinder pumps in the current Lorco system, 252. And between 6 and 12% of those 252, this is history, I guess, are being repaired every year. So rough number, I mean, if you want to split it, is 9 to 10% of the 252 grinder pumps need a tension of some type every year. And the average cost of a grinder pump repair, not a new grinder pump, has been $1,000. So like I say, grinder pumps are really a pain. And they really, if you can't, gravity is the way to go. And grinder pumps create a lot of-
Equal fur and your third-
Yeah, create an awful lot of-
In Lorco's preference, Lorco entity, their preference is grinder pumps. Which we've tried to dissuade them from that and they will not get past that, but that's their decision.
Well, I, I thought part of that was just the, the sheer area that we're servicing and the elevation. Like I say, you get, you can't go down 35 feet very easily around here without running into water, you know? So that's where gravity becomes a problem when you're going miles after miles, even at a 1% fall. I mean, it becomes an issue. So very positive. They're, they're excited about the, the doings of the county. It seems like they're, you know, it seems it's, you know, the articles in the paper that have been out there seem that they feel that this would be a benefit to them. And obviously, it would be a huge benefit to them and they feel it would be a benefit to Avon Lake Regional Water, which of course-
Well, that's why we've been backing it.
Yeah, it will be. So again, they enjoyed seeing me down there. I'm going to try to go every month if I can. On the third Thursday of each month is their meeting. Okay? And that's all I have.
All right. Well, thank you for that thorough report, Mr. Ricky. I'd like to see, Mr. Monroe, what's the, given the 690 and, and the whatever, 125 and 25 or whatever, what would be the resulting number of connections? Or how close are we getting to break even?
Yeah, I'd, we'd have to look that up. I, I will look that up. I'll, I'll provide that at the next meeting.
Because again, that will come into the calculus with the county. Because if the county is getting like the pig taken out of the poach, you know, like, then you're, you're, it's going to be a pretty easy pencil for them.
I will get that information.
Okay. Any other members with reports?
I, I was only asked one question about somebody looking to develop some property in Avon Lake. And they told me the commercial piece of property, 12,000 square feet, was going to cost them about $80,000 in impact fees. Does that make sense? I know the size of the lot and the size of the building has something to do with that. It just, I couldn't defend it. I, I don't know.
If it's a, if it's a commercial property, it's based on the square footage of the parcel.
And it could be as high as 80,000?
Sure.
$80,000?
Based on the square, square footage, the, the trunk sanitary sewer fee that we provide annually, that we update based on the Cleveland Construction Cost Index. If it's a residential lot, it's a flat fee. If it's a commercial lot, it's based on the full square footage of the entire parcel, not just where they're building. So, and the reason being is they're basically paying their development fees, their trunk sanitary sewer fees, right now in today's dollars, when they develop. Because at a later date, they could develop further on that property and we wouldn't know.
So like Indy, which is going on Pin Oak Parkway, full bore right now, they have 17 acres of property there.
Now, it depends. There's multiple parcels.
Okay.
So that's what, you, you, you can't just say they have 17 acres. They may have 17 acres, but if they're only developing on two acres that in the other parcel, which is 15 acres, isn't getting developed, they're not paying anything on that until they develop on it.
Even though they own it, even though they own it.
It makes, yeah, it makes no difference who owns it.
Just think of the intensity of the development.
I guess my, my question comes down, have we been approached by a lot of people? Or do we think that this has ever been a detriment to development in Avon Lake? This high impact fees, these are out there?
Absolutely not. They're, they're not, they're not high. You got to remember, us as a utility back in the 80s and the 90s, we funded all of those sewers and we paid for all of that infrastructure. And that is a benefit to the public. And so they're paying us back for what we already paid for. It's, it's quite the opposite that it, it's, it's available sewers. And, you know, we had, we had arguments, disagreements, I should say, with some property owners that they didn't feel they should have to pay on the whole parcel. I'm only building over here.
That's what I'm thinking about.
And I, and I said, well, but you could develop later on and you, and we wouldn't know about it. Because once you establish the service, that's, that's our, our leverage. We, we have to establish the service for them. So this property owner argued that, well, I'm building this brand new building. I'm not, not going to develop. Well, ultimately, they had to pay their, their, their fees for that entire parcel, which is very large. And lo and behold, a year later, they built two more buildings on that parcel. So it was exactly what I said, but they paid all of their fees.
Are we oversizing the, the tap then, based on the size of the property? Even though the building is, you know what I mean? They're putting in a-
The tap is, it, we don't determine the tap. The, the lateral is the property owners. They're, they're, what they're paying for is they're tapping into our system. So if they have a building that requires a six inch lateral, so be it. If they build another building later on-
The size of the lateral has nothing to do, like the water size of it, water tap, it's-
Water is completely different. This is, this is trunk sanitary sewer fee and it's based on, you know, how much frontage you have on a commercial property on the, on the main, as well as the entire area of that parcel.
I think it's fair to say too, Mr. Monroe, if I can add on to what you're saying, to the extent that people with undeveloped land run into these fees, that's the extent that the rest of the people that are on the sewer don't have to pay for like money they're not making on the undeveloped land. So when it comes time to develop, my mental model, Mr. Ricky, is like, say you have an apartment building with like 200 units. It's a lot different from a big house, you know what I mean?
I go through that every day. I got a, I got a, I own property that has 12 tenants. What's it worth empty? What's it worth full?
Right.
Huge difference, you know, huge difference. And I'm just, you know, all you ever hear about is people saying they want tax relief, tax relief, tax relief. Have anybody ever come to us and said they want sewer impact relief?
Well, I mean, someone that doesn't like the fact of them having to pay for the benefit of a system, yeah, they would say, we, we shouldn't have to pay that. But again, I guess, why should you, you know, we, we're all very aware of litigation that we had with a, with a developer that we, because they did not pay their fair share. And we were adamant about that and we, we resolved that. But they paid their fair share, just like everyone else. So it's, you know, you know, I guess we, anyone could make the argument that they shouldn't have to pay it, but I, you know, it's, everyone's paying their fair share.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else, folks? All right, public speakers, Mr. Jurnich.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Officer Riber, anything to say to the board? Okay, next item on the agenda then is executive session. The CEO requests an executive session to discuss the compensation of a public employee and the purchase and/or sale of property for public purposes. Based on discussion in the executive session, the board may take formal action upon reconvening the public meeting. There's a recommended motion. Mr. Mondello, would you mind making that motion?
Sure. Move to meet in executive session as allowed by ORC Section 121.22 G1 and G2 to consider the compensation of a public employee in the purchase and/or sale of property for public purchases and to include the CUE and a representative from Manzur.
Thank you, Mr. Mondello. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Schnabel. This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Ricky?
Yes.
Mrs. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Mondello?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. So we will head into executive session. The time is 7:32, I guess. 33. And when the room is cleared out. Thank you, everyone, for attending and or watching us on Facebook or YouTube. And there will be another meeting in two weeks.